Brings you guys over here to Seattle City Hall.
We are here to be heard. King County is putting this shelter project, it's another forced policy onto our community and there was no engagement, there was no outreach. And it's time that the city and the council listen to us.
Well, Chinatown International District is upset that the King County Executive wants to put in a homeless megaplex just a block away from them when they already have inundation of homeless facilities and shelters in their area already. And they're worried that that will damage the community and the crime etc. that comes along with it. So we're here as the King County Republican Party and the Washington State Republican Party to support them and say that they should have been notified, they should have had input, which is what they're trying to get now. We're trying to help them get that, that being listened to by the King County Executive and by the Seattle City Council. So that's why we're here, just to support them. And to say we stand with them and we're looking for reasonable solutions that don't disproportionately impact a older and low-income community. That's just not right.
To support the CID, the Central International District, and stand in solidarity with them for what's going on in their community right now, the expansion of the 50-bed and 100% homeless industrial complex right in the middle of the International District.
So when was the last time you had any correspondence with the city regarding this issue?
There was a meeting about a week and a half ago with Tammy Morales's office. A couple of representatives from office came. But we asked, we asked the county for a pause in this project so the proper engagement outreach could be done. You were told no. And now we want our representatives to come, listen to the community, come meet us and hear our concerns.
I don't know offhand. I mean, I've just heard it's been over a week.
Okay, then the third question I have was, do you feel that they, that the city or by extension the CID community will be able to take up a correspondence if they actually do get traction, similar to how in India, a strike was resolved after 17 rounds each, sometimes going a month in between, between the city leadership and the protest leadership to resolve an issue?
Do I have confidence that I think this will be resolved in Seattle? No.
Well, King County says they've done the community outreach and feel it's inadequate. And this is on the macro level. We're trying to tell the county, if you need to do community outreach, you need a couple of toolkits that we recommend. We have the social equity toolkit that Seattle has and also the CID community advocacy toolkit. And so all these resources are available for the city and the county to outreach to our community. And so the excuse that, you know, evidently, King County is saying this is the first time they had to reach out to our community. They should have known better than to just contact 12 individuals. They should have contacted and had public hearings and talked to the actual business owners and the residents.
All right, Madam Clerk, and our tech folk, how are we? I see we have a quorum and I see you are a little over 2 o'clock, so let me know when you want us to begin.
Charity, can you please confirm how many in-person speakers we have at this point?
We have approximately 60.
Sixteen?
Six, zero.
Sixty.
Okay. Sixty, oh, I'm sorry. And how many on remote?
We have 12 so far remote.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Today is Tuesday, September 20th. The media and the Seattle City Council will come to order. It is 2:03 and I am Deborah Juarez. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Councilmember Musceta.
Present.
Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Present.
Councilmember Sawa.
Present.
Councilmember Strauss.
Present.
Councilmember Herbl.
Here.
Council President Juarez.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Presentations, I am aware that we do not have any presentations today, so we will move to public comment. Colleagues, at this time, we will open the hybrid public comment period. For the hybrid public comment period, the remote slash in-person speakers, whichever is greater, will be heard first, actually lesser, and then will be followed by remote in-person speakers attending the council chambers. Please pay attention to the 10-second warning that you get to wrap up your comments. I'm guessing a lot of you are here speaking on the same thing. All right, with that, Madam Clerk, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Thank you. And I'm going to, before we do the recording, I'm just going to have the interpreter start calling the names in person, and then we'll do recording before the remote. Is that all right?
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, we're the第一位讲说话的梁先生，有请梁先生。大家下午好。Good afternoon, everybody. I have been living in Chinatown International District and doing business there for 30 years. I am horrified to learn that the government is going to put together a problematic shelter campsite very close to Chinatown. 布给他们吃。I personally sympathize with the homeless, and I often donate money and donate other stuff for them. 他们生活得好好，政府有好的安排。I am always very concerned with the homeless care about them, and I never object about the government taking good care of them. But the problem with CID is because of the pandemic, we, a lot of our seniors are suffering, a lot of the businesses are affected by the people, the beggars, the people asking for money in CID. CID is a special community, unique by itself. Seventy percent to eighty percent of the residents are seniors and they don't speak English, and then they cannot communicate with the homeless, and they are afraid of them. I just want to say I am in support of the government giving more money, giving more manpower, giving more material to help the homeless. But that doesn't mean that it's good to put 500 beds mega shelter close to Chinatown ID. 好，他们应该承担这个责任。
Mr. Interpreter, can you let our, can you let our speaker know that he has about 10 seconds to wrap it up?
Okay. I hope the county government, the city government would be fair to everybody, and even to the disturbed, the homeless people in different countries. And we will continue to be caring and taking care of their homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
My name is Beth. I'm representing the people in Chinatown who don't speak English. A responsible government should be taking care of all the communities of their public safety and cleanliness. Ever since the government has established the navigation center and now calling another project, a great project, close to Chinatown ID, we don't oppose to that, but every day Chinatown ID are sharing a bigger share of crime and insecurity. And including assault, including theft, robbery, assault, happening every day. And the loss of the car owners and the business owners are in more than tens and tens of thousands every day. If someone says these great projects, great plans, has nothing to do with the safety of a community, how come you don't distribute it to every single community? So to be fair to everybody, they should be distributed to some area, communities that has better, more personal space. 我要令到精神病患的条件疏远。And those who be helpful to those who have mental illness too. Yeah, the government is not able to handle all the crime these days, and this great plan is totally irresponsible and unfair to us. We demand this great plan to be far away from us, the residents of CID and also the business owners of CID. And we also demand compensation to us too. 我哋需要一个公平、公正嘅。
Mr. Interpreter, can you help the speaker go?
We'll switch up to the remote speakers now, and then we'll come back to the in-person speakers after the remote speakers. So we'll run the video for the directions on the remote speakers, and we'll start there. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, before you start the recording, I want to reiterate again, we have 60 people sitting in chambers, and we're going to have 12 remote speakers. Please keep your comments to one minute. I don't like to have to shut people off. Thank you. Go ahead, Madam.
Good afternoon. Howard Dale with Seattle Stop and Or commenting on our failed police accountability system. Today, you will appoint the new OPA director, and in the next few months, you will appoint the new police chief and approve a new police duty contract. None of this will result in police being held accountable for violence and abuse that they engaged in during 2020. None of this will result in Seattle police being held accountable when they grossly violate the escalation policy of training and kill folks in behavioral crisis. As happened with the still-in-person of Beacon Hill in January, Derek Haver, Derek Haver, and so many others, who will still be empowering salary bureaucrats to protect the police from community and spending under $10 million to do it. This September marks the anniversary of the SBD killings, Herbert Hightower Jr., his sister is still tied to correctness and justice, Mike Kuan Yew Chen, and Frankie Lee Seem, all people experiencing behavioral health crisis, all killed by the SBD. We do not need new captains for a ship heading in long direction. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emily Nelson, and I work for NCHOR, CDA, and CID. Two years ago, you opened a 270-bed emergency shelter along our border through no public notice or directory services. We've been wondering where the draft is citing crimes, gambling, fire, or significant frauds coming from the last couple of years, and now we see how her, her stay alive with the opening. This is not an us versus them or NPI situation. This is about what happens around shelters, especially those with our low barriers with active drug use, like dangerous photo and navigating shelters. NPIs don't live in a fourth, largely non-English-speaking community, but already have over 20 shelters, having 350 clients within miles of their homes. Look at a payroll map and you'll find that offered as tested jackets surrounding low-barrier shelters. Those are opposite-paced people who prey on shelter clients, drug use, respect for doctors, respect for veterans of weapons. SBDs are sensitive. You know you're already at the highest risk of escalation with school and daycare, and a majority...
I'm Lucy Musceta with NCHOP CA. Engrants have talked about it, the CID for 54 years. We hold two contracts with the homelessness authorities for diversion and homelessness prevention. Our CID building houses, homeless, and permanent homeless families. While the whole values of the homelessness authority align closely with our own, they are making it our work much harder. We implore you to ask in accordance with the homeless authority's stated convictions around racial equity. As it stands, this team, this team for colossal homeless shelter next to the CID looks like an intentional ploy to keep the poor people of color down, to concentrate them in one small area away from wider, more affluent areas, and to pit them against each other. The homelessness authorities website says we stand for racial equity and social justice and center enlisted experience. How can you address racial equity focusing on one marginalized community, homeless people, to the exclusion of another, the CID? Stop disregarding the list experience of the people of the CID who...
Hello?
Hello, we're here. You guys speak up, sir.
Sorry, I'm a reporter. Comment for the district of Ballard. Talking about Ballard Home, or, now, homeless, and, 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 and,
I've been living here since 2006 for many, many years, and I'm very, I know Chinatown very well. Because the homeless people gathering in Chinatown ID is creating a lot of insecurity. I can give you some examples. They are beating up the senior citizens, cursing them out, robbing them.
经常发生。
That happen all the time. And the business people, they got their door broken into, they got their storage area broken into, car owners got their car broken into. I myself, I had my car broken into two times the last few nights, and each time costing me $200. All by white, all by some Korean, and then some Mexican. That is not fair.